Only another room.
It's bringing back memories, John.
There were, there were another room with the door closed. I can't believe you can hear them. Wow.
Yeah, they're talking to the twins.
Yeah. Oh, my gosh.
Signs of life at the Lopes house.
Okay.
Always full of life here.
Okay, the Revere Zoning Board of Appeals will now come to order. Roll call.
Roll call the members of the zoning board of appeals, Mr. Bucili. Here, Mr. Lemon.
Here.
Here.
Or the unit.
Mr. Lopes.
Present.
Here, Mr. Pelton.
Here.
Here and Chairman Tucker.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. First application on tonight's agenda is that of Sivan Ervings, 185 Endicott Avenue. Seeking a variance of, uh, the part, seeking a parking variance to enable the conversion of a single family dwelling to a two-family dwelling at 185 Endicott Avenue.
Is the applicant here?
Uh, yes, I'm here.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
Sivan Ervings, 185 Endicott Ave.
Okay, it's my understanding that you wish to, um, continue this?
Uh, no.
Or withdraw without prejudice?
Yeah, we wish, uh, to withdraw at this time with no prejudice, please.
Okay, seeing that it's a public hearing, I will ask if there's any proponents. Um, there's one attendee. I don't see the hand raised. Um, please use the hand raise function if you'd like to speak. Seeing and hearing none, I'll close outside of hearing any opponents. Seeing and hearing, oh, um, Joanne, if you wish to speak, um.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, um, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so I have no problem with them withdrawing without prejudice and, um, and we'll see what he can come up with, um, uh, you know, in the future.
Hey.
Thank you.
There anyone else seeing and hearing none? I'll ask any members. Do you have any questions? Is there a motion to withdraw without prejudice?
I will.
Yeah, that's seconded by.
I will.
Back on, okay. Roll call.
Yes.
Roll call to allow the petitioner to withdraw the application without prejudice. Mr. Bucili. Yes, Mr. Lemon.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton.
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker.
Yes.
Yes, this application has been withdrawn without prejudice.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
And thank you, Ashley.
You're welcome, Mr. Ervings. Uh, next application is A 20 dash 26. This is on the application of Delmi Lemus and Carlos Garcia of 951 Revere Beach Parkway, seeking variances for minimum side yard setbacks for lots greater than 6,000 square feet to enable the appellate to construct a 386 square foot addition at 951 Revere Beach Parkway.
Anyone present that wishes to speak on their behalf?
Believe, uh, Mr. Donahue, Attorney Donahue is here.
Attorney Donahue, you just have to unmute. Attorney Donahue? You can speak.
I, I'm sorry. I just noticed that it says Attorney Sean Donahue under my name. I am Scott Blasak. I am the architect. I'm not Attorney Donahue.
All right. Well, I don't see him in the audience.
Not sure how I.
Don't worry about changing it. Don't worry about changing it. We just want Attorney Sean Donahue to be present so that we can have this hearing.
Yes, he, he should. As far as I know, he is planning to be on, so.
Okay, can we skip and go to the next calendar item number, please?
Yes, we can, Chairman. Just for the record, A 20 dash 28, that has been rescheduled for December 23rd um, due to a legal advertising error. Um, so the next application up would be A 20 dash 29, the application of Abdelhamid Ben Karain of 33 Cambridge Street, requesting a variance of minimum parking space dimensions to enable the appellate to convert a single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling at 33 Cambridge Street, Revere, Mass.
Okay, and there any wish to speak on their behalf? Is there anyone here for 33 Cambridge Street?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, guys.
Mike, state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Abdelhamid Ben Karain, 33 Cambridge Street, Revere.
Okay, um, I see that this application's in front of us and it was denied, um, this year, in fact. Um, did you go in front of the planning board for a substantial change to come back in front of us? Because normally you can't come back in front of the Board of Appeals for two years.
Oh, I wasn't aware of that. The application was, uh, actually last year, not on 2020.
Yes, but it's a two-year process, sir.
Okay, I'm really sorry. I didn't know that. I wasn't aware of this. Last year I had, you know, my attorney to represent me, but this year I'm doing it on my own and I wasn't aware that, you know, I thought it was one year. I didn't know it was two years.
Yeah, there's a two-year process. It's in the denial letter. Um, but you have to, it's two years before you could come back in front of us, unless there was a substantial change in your in front of the planning board. And based on your application, that would not be a substantial change, but you still could go in front of the planning board and, and get their comments as far as their belief if it's a substantial change.
Um, I did, you know, change, you know, well, you know, on the, uh, on the plot plan, you know, while I'm planning on removing, you know, the, yeah, set of stairs.
Yes, however, we can't hear you, we can't have this, uh, hearing because it's within the two years and you didn't go in front of the planning board, so.
Okay, so.
This is a real mute point.
Okay, all right, um, then I was dropping out the application. Is that what I'm supposed to do?
Okay. I'm not sure, Ashley. The application is really invalid, am I correct? So they don't have to withdraw or anything?
He, he can withdraw. He would have to.
He can?
He can.
Okay, um, so.
Up to the board. He submitted the application. I, as the clerk, forwarded that to the zoning board of appeals for consideration. ZB takes the determination.
So you'd like to withdraw without prejudice? Um, I'd ask for a roll call.
Mike, can I ask one question before we do that? I'm sorry, Ashley. Will the process start all over again? I did see that, that he was here last year. I, I remember that. So Ashley, will the process start all over again, meaning?
As, as the law reads, the applicant, the, I'm sorry, the zoning board of appeals cannot make a, cannot take favorable action on the new application unless he receives unanimous vote from the zoning board of appeals and a vote of the planning board, all but one member must be in agreement if the application is substantially different or not.
Okay. Understood. Okay, sorry, Michael. No, that's fine. That's, so.
Without knowing if the planning board could meet, maybe the board could continue this. I don't, I just don't know when the planning board can.
I think it's a moot point that this time to vote on it. That's the reason why I'm saying that, you know?
So are, are you going to the applicant? Do you feel you're gonna go in front of the planning board and ask, um, if there's a substantial change to your, so that you can come in front of us again?
Uh, I wasn't aware of this, and, uh, you know, if, if that's what I have to do, then, you know, I will do it, but I did, you know, take all these steps, you know, to get in front of you guys and, you know, if, if that's what I have to do, then.
Well, you, you, I think you should really just go to site plan review because if you went to site plan review, they probably would have been telling you exactly what I'm saying now. Um, so is a motion to continue this until, um, January 27th? Um, and that will give the applicant time to go to site plan review and they'll direct him if he has to go in front of the planning board?
That makes sense.
So it asks for a roll call.
On a roll call to continue the application to the meeting of January 27th at 5:00 PM, Mr. Bucili. Voting yes, Mr. Lemon.
Yes.
Voting yes, Mr. Lopes.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton.
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker.
Yes. So for the applicant, I would suggest that you contact site plan review and met, and just discuss this, your application, and then they'll tell you what steps you have to take.
Thank you so much, guys. Happy holidays. Thank you. Bye bye now.
Next application is A 20 dash 30. This is on the application of David Mellon and Margaret Mellon of 29 Dedham Street, seeking minimum lot size and minimum frontage, minimum side yard setback, maximum height, minimum landscaping in the front yard to enable the appellate to re-subdivide existing lots, lot 91 and part 92 at 25 Dedham Street and part lot 92 at 27 Dedham Street into new proposed lots, one at 29 Dedham Street and lot number two at 27 Dedham Street, to allow the appellant to construct a two-family dwelling on proposed lot one and to construct a two-family dwelling on proposed lot two.
Okay, is anybody here representative, speak on their behalf?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board of appeals. My name is Attorney Larry Semione, Law Office at 300 Broadway, Revere, Massachusetts. Now will be representing David Mellon and Margaret Mellon, residents of 29 Dedham Street, Revere, Massachusetts. They seek from this honorable board a variance to create lot one and two and to, those lots would be 40 foot of frontage and 4,000 square feet as set forth in our exhibit number one. They also seek to construct two homes, one on each lot, two-family, uh, and variances will be required for both of those goals. The property is located in the RB district. Lot, uh, number 29 Dedham Street is 2,687 square feet and has 32 feet of frontage. I've marked it 29 in my applica, 25 in my application because the 1936 plan shows, uh, it has 25, but it's now, I understand, 27 Dedham Street. So 27, 27 Dedham Street is 48 foot of frontage, 5,313 square feet. These lots are shown on the 1936 plan that I submitted to you as exhibit five. And as you can see from that initial subdivision back in 1936, that these two lots, uh, these two houses existed on a single lot. The purpose of this rather unusual subdivision was to bifurcate the two structures as allowed under the planning board regulations in the least non-conforming way they could possibly do. They must have at least 10 feet of frontage on each lot, um, and which they did. And that is why you see the unusual subdivision you see before you in 1936. So what my clients are requesting is a re-subdivision of tho, of those properties in order to create two lots. Now, when you look at 27 Dedham Street, it consists of lot 91 and 92. It has 5,300 square feet, 48 foot of frontage, and it's vacant because a home that had a serious fire in it in 2016 had to be demolished in 2017 by my, my clients. 29 Dedham Street is pot lot 92. It has 32 feet of frontage, 28, 2886 in square feet. It's currently improved by a non-conforming single-family structure and it is the residence of the applicant. They live there today. So the applicant seeks to re-subdivide the property in accordance with exhibit number one, creating the two new lots. Um, lot one and two with 40 foot of frontage and 4,000 square feet. Should the board grant that, we'll be able to get an A and R approval from the Revere Planning Board. The A and R approval will then create the lots now that this board allowed for the lots to be 40 foot of frontage and 4,000 square feet. The applicant further proposes two, two homes, one on each of the new lots. There are going to be two family homes. On the first floor would be an underground parking, a garage, if you will, and a 610 square foot one-bedroom unit. Second floor, um, would be a three-bedroom unit, approximately 1,176 square feet. The ob, the petitioner also seeks to have four off-street parking spaces as shown on lot one, on exhibit one. Each, each unit would have, in other words, each structure would have four off-street parking spaces in accordance with the regulation in the RB district. The applicant is proposing 35% of the front yard be landscaped. And finally, the applicant seeks a proposed height on lot 29 of 32.8 feet and on lot, I'm sorry, not lot 20, on lot one, 29 Dedham Street of 32.8 feet, while lot two, 27 Dedham Street would have a height of 40, 34.7 feet. So those are slightly over the 30 feet required. Um, the front 30-foot limit, uh, is established where a lot is less than 5,000 square feet in accordance with the table of dimensional controls. So respecting the subdivision itself, the relief we're asking is from non-compliance with 172410 of the table of use regulations and district regulations. Um, the table of dimensional regulations have the minimum lot size in the RB district to be 8,000 square feet with 80 foot of frontage. And as I've told you, we're trying, we would like to create two lots, lot one and two, which do not comply with that. So we need relief from that regulation. We're also seeking relief for the two proposed homes to be constructed. Uh, again, seeking relief from 172410, the dimensional regulations. The first is with respect to the minimum side setback. 10 is required under the current zoning RB and we are proposing 5.5 feet. So on each lot, if you look to exhibit one, you'll see that the home uh, places a setback of 10.5 feet on the right-hand side to accommodate parking. So there will, uh, all the parking will be centralized, uh, between the two homes and that leaves us 5.5 feet on the left-hand side when it comes to lot one and the right-hand side when it comes to lot two. With respect to the height, I've noted before, we need a variance from footnote Y1 because the lot is less than 5,000 square feet. And so we're asking for relief from the 30-foot requirement. And finally, we're asking for relief from 1724070A4, which requires 40% of landscaping in the front yard. Uh, we're proposing 35%. My clients have lived at this property their entire life. They're Revere residents. Many of the people in the neighborhood know each other and one of those families is the Hill family. They live at 28 Dedham Street. These families have known each other for a very, very long time. At this point, back in 2018, Mr. Mellon Senior was becoming very ill and subsequently passed away, leaving his property, 2729 Dedham Street, to his children, who are the applicants before you today. And they tried to keep the property up and, you know, between the, one, one of the three children that are left in the Mellon family is, um, somewhat, um, disabled and has difficulty getting work. The other two are working very hard. Keeping up an old home like they have at, um, 29 Dedham Street was very difficult. They started getting from ISD and so forth. And so they reached out and they asked the Hill family, which is a well-respected family in the construction industry, specifically Tom Hill III and his brother, um, to assist them in trying to develop the land. And that's what this, this proposal was all about. Hope is that, um, they'll be able to get this variance and two brand-new homes will be constructed in this area. These homes, uh, should be right around the same square footage uh, as the homes in the area, same as the, uh, as the square footage of the proposed lots. And our hope is, is that not only there'll be two new homes, but the Mellon, uh, family will be helped uh, by the efforts, uh, of their longtime neighbors, um, Tom Hill and his family. I'll answer any questions you have. When you're ready, Mr. Chairman. Need to unmute, Mr. Chairman.
Michael, you're on mute?
We're on mute, Mike. Wow. Okay, um, I see one person that, that, as a proponent, um, raised a hand here. Um, Valerie, you wish to speak? Any other proponents?
Chairman, I have a letter on record from a proponent. Do you want it read into the record?
Yes, please.
Okay. This is from Giovanna Fiori, 33 Dedham Street. I'm the homeowner at 33 Dedham Street. I'm absolutely a proponent for a proposal, for the proposal being brought before you, for the demolition and reconstruction of 27 and 29 Dedham Street. I have had multiple concerns with the standing structure currently at 29 Dedham Street. The property has been neglected for many years, causing it to deteriorate. I'm worried about the health and safety issues from this building. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie, are you a proponent and you wish to speak? I see that your hand is raised. She's on mute, Michael.
I'm muted.
Yeah, I asked it to unmute. Uh, Valerie?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yes. Um, I live at 21 Dedham Street, which abuts the property and my house is 100 years old and I live in the home that my grandfather built. And my property line is only three feet from my home. So the home that they're proposing to build next to me is far too close. It's gonna greatly reduce, um, the quality of my life by reducing the natural light into my home. Um, it will make it more noisy, um.
Ma'am, are you a proponent, meaning in favor of this project?
I'm an opponent.
Okay, I asked for proponents, so just let me close that part of the hearing then. Um, hearing and seeing no other proponents, I'll close that side of the hearing.
I apologize.
Before we go to opponents, does the ward counselor wish to speak or would you speak after?
Uh, I'd like, I'd like to speak after Valerie. I, you know, she's obviously the next door neighbor, so.
All righty. Um, now, for opponents, um, Valerie, I see that your hand was raised. Your, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi, my name is Valerie Tomino. I live at 21 Dedham Street. My property abuts, um, the proposed buildings. Um, I am very, um, concerned about all the variances that they are requesting. Um, I, I don't want this house to be so close to me that will reduce my privacy. My, my bedrooms are right on the left side of the house. Um, this, I believe that this is too much house for the, this property.
Okay. Is there any other proponents? Anyone else that's not in favor? Hearing now, I'll close that side of the hearing. Okay, Counselor Key?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm glad to hear from, uh, Ms. Tomino. We've spoken a few times. I know that she has had some concerns and I tried to, uh, get her and the parties involved to, um, you know, figure out what, what would be the best course for the neighborhood. Um, I know that I did get a few letters of, in, in favor, uh, certainly the neighbor across the street. Certainly the, the neighbor to the left, if you were staring at the property, that's Joanne. She's actually, um, she works, uh, at, uh, she's in the, she's in the parking department. And then diagonally across the street, um, the neighbors obviously felt that the property in its current state wouldn't, would definitely, uh, be better suited for what is proposed. Um, what I'd also say is, I was, you know, just talking with them initially and seeing the scope of the project, I, I, you know, some of the amount of variances stuck out to me as well. Um, but looking at the size being both, both the properties are under 1,800 square feet or right around 1,800 square feet. They did, they're very much modest homes. Um, they're not these overblown two families that I was afraid of. Uh, and they did have four spaces per, that, they pretty much had one space per bedroom. So four, four spaces, four bedrooms. But, um, with that being said is, I don't live right next door to the property and I have to respect what Ms. Tomino is saying because she's the next door neighbor. I would have hoped that, that the parties would have been able to reach a compromise. Um, and it doesn't look like they're there yet. You know, that some, I, I was under the impression that there was a conversation that she was gonna be satisfied with some fencing that she was hoping for and some, um, landscaping, but it doesn't seem like that's been worked out. Um, so again, I, I'd, you know, much rather see some, some form of a compromise between all of the neighbors so that this is more of a happy project. Uh, I, I don't have a lot of issues with it. But I think that that's something that would, should, should be better worked out. Otherwise, you know, I, I would probably, uh, stay fairly neutral on this. I, I, I certainly do think there's more pros than cons though.
Thank you. Um. Does the attorney wish to speak?
He, I can tell you that my clients have reached out and spoke to, uh, the abbotter at 21 Dedham Street. Um, I, I was, reported that she was interested in some fencing. Um, and, uh, you know, she didn't commit either way. I, I can only tell you that, um, if you would like to continue this matter for another meeting, the developer can change and shift, um, although he doesn't want to because he wants to centralize the parking, so if, if, um, we switch the building, if they choose to switch the building and put the parking on the right-hand side, then there'll be, you know, 10.5 feet on that side, which, uh, would be the, would be more than the required amount of side yard for that area, but that'll be up to them. If you'd like to give the.
That is sounds better.
So I'll just ask if there's any other members that wish to speak?
Uh, Mike, I got a question. She's talking about number 25?
I think 27.
27.
You're 27, but on the back of, uh, number 29, it looks like it's empty space. I'm looking at number 25, then on the side of number 29, but I don't see any structure there.
There's a house right there, John, to the left.
Yeah, you don't see that. In my house, it's only three feet from the property line.
I'm looking at exhibit number five. Would it be on that?
No, exhibit number five is 1936 plan, but if you look at exhibit number one, through you, Mr. Chairman, to, to Board Member Lopes, uh, Ms. Tomino lives at 21, 21 Dedham Street, which is to the right
To the right.
Lot two, um, 27 Dedham Street.
Okay. It also has the footage wrong. It's, it's, it's a little further away than what she's stating as well. Well, I saw that on the plan as well.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have exhibit one, unfortunately.
Yeah, it's on the right-hand side, John, in the house.
I don't, I don't have exhibit one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Exhibit one should be the, um, in the application.
Yeah, I don't have it. Mine's.
It's the first plane in the application.
Yeah, mine goes to two to five, so I don't have one for some reason. Yeah, I don't have exhibit one, but she's more than willing to make, uh, to make amends if it's, uh, restructured, I guess.
Yeah, it's on the screen right here, John. She's showing it, uh, Ashley. And to the left, they're gonna raise the, the, they're gonna take down a building to the left. And it's.
I don't, I don't see, she, it didn't pop up on my screen, but it's okay, but she's willing to accept the change. So that's a plus.
Okay, so did, we'd have to have a motion to continue, um. Thank you, Ashley. Uh, who wishes to make a motion to continue? I do. Okay, seconded? Okay, seconded?
I will second it.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I'm, I'm for it, yeah.
A motion to continue, roll call, please.
On the motion to continue this application to January twenty-seventh, Mr. Bucili. Voting yes, Mr. Lemonna?
Yes.
Voting yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this application will be forwarded to the next hearing date of January twenty-seventh at five P M.
Thank you very much, Chairman and members, and have a happy holiday.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you. And back to application A twenty dash twenty-six, uh, the application of Delmi Lemus and Carlos Garcia. Seeking a minimum side yard setback requirement of ten feet for lots greater than six thousand square feet within the R B district. To enable the appellant to construct a three hundred eighty-six square foot addition at nine fifty-one Revere Beach Parkway.
Okay, is, who wishes to speak for the, for the applicant?
Sean Donahue.
Okay, you'd have to speak up because your volume's very low.
Let me uh, see if I can adjust my volume. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, but maybe a little.
Very faint.
Any assistance on the volume? Anyone have any suggestions?
You, you, you're.
That's on your end.
Good, you're here. You're, you're good right now.
You're good there, yeah, yeah.
Right. Thank you. Sean Donahue, on behalf of the applicant. Uh, I'm an attorney. I represent uh, Delmi Lewis Lemus and Carlos Garcia. The owners of nine fifty-one Revere Beach Parkway. My office is located at twenty-one Pauline Street in Winthrop. Um, last time we were before the board, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. There was discussion about uh, a basement uh, or versus a crawl space. Um, today we submitted a plan uh, to uh, Madam Clerk. Um, depicting, it's a revised plan depicting a crawl space instead of a basement. Uh, I know that didn't leave you much time to review the plan, so uh, I'll leave it. I'll, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Are there any proponents that wish to speak? Hearing now, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Hearing now, I'll close that side of the hearing. My biggest question is, there's an easement that you had to, um. I believe you were gonna be checking on that with the city engineer and we have had no correspondence concerning the easement. So they, and the engineer was not willing to. Allow you um, to come forward because they will not allow you to build over the easement.
Well, I, I did exchange e- um, correspondence with uh, Mr. Rice, Ricestrom.
Yes.
And uh, you're correct. His position is, is that where the easement uh, is currently present. Um, we cannot build over it. My, my uh, contention was and continues to be that. Um, where both of the lots are now held in common ownership. By uh, by my clients. Um, it uh, it doesn't necessitate. Um. An easement. Um, I, I've, I've been doing some research. I'd like to continue to do some research and put. Something together for Mr. Ricestrom's consideration. So um, we are addressing the issue, Mr. Chairman. Uh, it's just that we don't have. Um, I, I'd like to think we don't have a final response right now. My hope is that maybe I could persuade Mr. Ricestrom. Um, so I'd like that opportunity to continue to do so.
Well, unfortunately, um, the application itself, um, you're almost time-lapse. So you'd have to withdraw without prejudice and refile because we can't have a continuance on your application.
Um, well, we will tol- we will waive the ti- the tolling of the time. Um, if the, if you grant us the applic- uh, grant us the continuance, we'll waive the tolling of the time. From uh, this evening until the next uh, until the next hearing date. We'll even go back from the last hearing date. I mean, we'll waive that time. I understand there's a requirement in which. This board must take final action. But we also can waive that time and I'm asking uh, for your consideration, for, for the board's consideration in allowing us to waive that time.
I would have to um, ask the clerk.
I'll put it in writing also.
It, it would have to be in writing, that's all. And the board can vote on it as long as the attorney promises to put this request in writing.
Promise.
So what would we just ask for a motion to continue then, Ashley? Um, pending the letter?
Excuse me, it would be a motion, actually, it would have to be mo- motion to accept uh, an agreement between the zoning Board of Appeals and the applicant. Um, to, to um, waive the um, to, uh, the, the time.
And, and again, I, I just want to point out, I'll even go back to the last hearing date. Now, uh, because that last hearing was continued till tonight because of information that this board was requesting from us. So we'll waive going back to the last date up through the next hearing date. And I'll put that in writing and submit that to uh, uh, Ms. Melnick.
Okay.
Okay, so I'd ask for a roll call then.
Roll call to accept an agreement between the applicant and the zoning Board of Appeals to allow for an extension of time to January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. Mr. Bucili. Yes, Mr. Lemonna?
Yes.
Voting yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes, I would ask that you please submit that before um, Friday at noon so Ashley can have it in her office.
Will do.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Merry Christmas to all.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, Attorney Donahue.
I believe we have one other item, Ashley?
Yeah, just one other item. This came in as a late application, uh, S clause, one thousand North Pole. Care of the City Council President, Patrick Keefe. Requesting temporary variances of the revised zoning ordinances for minimum height. Flight path setbacks and minimum landing zone locations on December twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. To enable the appellant to conduct a one-night, not-for-profit delivery service within the city of Revere. To deliver, to facilitate the delivery of toys and gifts to various resident locations within the community via rooftop and chimney access. The applicant further requests a variance of non-domesticated animal use, reindeer. To enable a reduction of carbon emissions when conducting said delivery services. The application notes that the reindeer respond to the names Dasher, Dancer, Prancer, Vixen. Comet, Cupid, Donner, and Blitzen. And we can't forget Rudolph.
Amen.
I don't believe that requires a roll call, does it? Just raising a hand?
Roll call on Santa Claus's variance. All in favor?
Yeah.
All, all approved.
Our next meeting will be the special meeting for January twenty-third. I mean, I'm sorry, December twenty-third at five P M. So look forward to hearing from everybody at that time.
All right, thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night.
Official meeting will be January twenty-seventh at five P M.
Yes.
Thank you.